Good afternoon. I would like to call the order, call to order, the June eighth, two thousand and twenty-three Evansville Vandenberg Public Library Board of Trustees meeting. Today, we do have a quorum. At this time, I would like to, I need to appoint a secretary of town. So if Sheila Huff could fill in.
What position is it?
This is the secretary.
Okay, whatever that entails.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Okay, at this time, so we have no visitors that have registered, but we do have some correspondence here, some patron acknowledgements. And they have some Google five-star reviews in it. So I'm gonna pass that around for your review. At this time, we will move to the consent agenda. So is there a motion to accept the consent agenda?
Somebody second.
We have a motion and a second to accept the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? With no discussion, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same sound. The motion passed. Next, we are moving on to governance. All right, so governance, we are having a public hearing and requested action by the board. So I will proceed with this information. On March ninth, two thousand and twenty-three, this governing body, the Evansville Public Library Board of Trustees authorized the library to negotiate the terms of a lease for a portion of Washington Square as a temporary relocation for McCullough Library while renovations take place. In accordance with the Indiana Code thirty-six dash one dash ten, Lori Tomlin, along with attorney Steve Barber, negotiated the terms of the proposed lease brought before the public today. In alignment with Indiana Code thirty-six dash one dash ten, section thirteen A, after the leasing agent EVPL and the lease or Evansville Holdings LLC have agreed upon the terms and conditions of the lease, but before the execution of the lease, the leasing agent shall publish notice of the hearing to be held before the leasing agent. So the public hearing of the proposed lease is this. Having been duly published at least ten days before today's hearings, evident in this presented form of affidavit of publication in the Evansville Courier-Press on May twenty-six, two thousand and twenty-three, all persons are entitled to be heard at this hearing as to whether the execution of the lease is necessary and whether the rental is fair and reasonable for the proposed structure. After hearing, after the hearing, which may be adjourned from time to time, the leasing agent may modify, confirm, or rescind the proposed lease. But the rental as set out in the published notice may not be increased. The leasing agent may rely on the testimony of the independent experts as to the fairness and reasonableness of the lease. So is there a motion to open the hearing up to the public for questions on the terms and conditions of the proposed lease? So is there a second? Okay, it has been moved and second that we open up the hearing up to the public for questions on the terms and conditions of the proposed lease. Are there any discussions? If no discussions, let's, well, there are some discussions. There are some discussions, okay. The negotiated terms of the lease with Evansville Holdings LLC as published in the notice include eight thousand two hundred sixty-nine square feet of the premises of Washington Square, a term of twelve months with the option to renew an additional three, three months under the same conditions if construction is not completed. The annual lease rental is fifty-four thousand dollars payable in monthly installments of forty-five hundred dollars per month. The term will commence no sooner than July thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-three, and the lease will be payable from, from available revenues of the rainy day fund. At this time, I am going to call on the CEO Scott for the administration's opinions on the fair and reasonableness of the lease and why it is necessary.
Okay, and yes, this is a very good price for square footage. For that amount of square footage. And the reason that this, we'd like to have additional space in Washington Square while we are renovating the McCullough Branch, it makes the renovation go quicker. And the cost for renting the space will offset costs and most definitely public service if we had to do a face construction project for the McCullough Branch, because we would have to keep the branch open during construction. And public service would not be as good without this temporary space. So it works to our benefit to do this.
Okay, is there further discussion?
About six and a half dollars a square foot, is that right?
I'd have to do the math, but that sounds right.
Did we ask the owners whether they've just donated all to us for the year?
Um, we did ask, but it's really hard to get a commercial entity to do that. Um, but the owner is based out of New York, out of Brooklyn, so.
Oh, well, he didn't want to say.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. We may have had a shot if it was a local, but yeah.
I'd say that this is a great idea. I'm glad we'll be able to keep most of McCullough working for the time going through renovations. It's gonna be good for the community.
Appreciate it.
Well, will we be, is the plan for that space to offer opportunity to store some of the collection there as well? Or is it more just the, the public facing?
That'll be the public facing, but it means we don't have to store the entire collection. That collection can be used. Um, we're taking, we're trying to fit, I believe, was it like forty percent Nancy roughly into that building? So it'll be a lot tighter than it is at the current McCullough, but they'll have access to a lot of materials and current materials. So, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So what end of the area is it?
It will be directly across from the coffee shop on, on the, I guess it'd be the north side.
Down coffee?
Yes.
I also noticed.
Store, I should say thrift store and coffee shop.
I noticed in the leasing agreement, if I interpreted it correctly, I did read through it fairly quickly, but um, there was not an opportunity for signage. It looked like that was prohibitive somewhat. There was a paragraph about sign, outdoor signage. And I just wondered, how are we going to make the public aware of where this?
The marketing department, Heather McGrady in the marketing department will be working on advertising for that. There'll be a big marketing push to let people know that the McCullough Branch has a temporary location at Washington Square. We'll be able to use the window on the inside of the mall to do any kind of advertisement, anything we need to do in there, just like other stores do. But on the exterior of the building, I don't believe that is allowed.
That's all it's referring to is on the exterior of the building.
That's what I.
For instance, where you would have Sears or JCPenney on the exterior of the building, that's prohibited. Anything inside, and they're actually going to help us with promotions on the new big digital sign they have out of.
Oh, good.
Green River in Washington.
Perfect.
And obviously, we'll.
Place, I guess.
Correct, exactly. Yes, absolutely.
Have you thought about having a grand opening on the first day to tell people come and have cookies and punch and get a book? They know what it is?
Are there any other discussions? If not, I would entertain questions or comments from any taxpayers present. Any?
They're all staff.
All staff, okay. There being none, is there a motion to close the hearing on the proposed lease? Is there a second? Okay, so it's been moved and seconded that we close the hearing on the proposed lease. Uh, is there any discussion? No discussion? Uh, all in favor of closing this? Please indicate by saying yes. All opposed?
I abstained on, I have to abstain on everything with this, because our company, uh, while I'm not directly involved, our company manages, manages the Washington Square.
Okay, so all in favor. How many do we have in favor? One, two, three. Okay, and we have one abstention and no opposed. So the motion passed. Thank you. Next on the agenda is the resol, is there?
Four.
Four. And I didn't know. I have to, if I have to, yes, I'm in favor. Okay. The chair's decision.
Could have four votes and have a seven member block.
Got you. Okay, next on the agenda is the resolution to accept negotiated proposed lease. So after hearing on the proposed, after the hearing on the proposed lease, the board will need to approve the resolution to accept the negotiated proposed lease. And I am going to ask Lori if she would proceed with the reading of the resolution.
Whereas the Evansville Vandenberg Public Library Board of Trustees has discussed and considered leasing a portion of Washington Square as a temporary relocation from McCullough Library while renovations take place therein. And whereas the Evansville Vandenberg Public Library Board of Trustees has considered the requirements contained in Indiana Code thirty-six dash twelve dash ten and Indiana Code thirty-six dash one dash ten for leasing such space and has determined that leasing such space is in the best interest of the library. And whereas the Evansville Vandenberg Public Library, I'm sorry, this is the wrong resolution. Not going to the wrong one out. Let me start over. Thank you.
It's already passed.
Yes, that one's already passed. So I'm good to go up until this particular, no, it's still the same. Nope, it's not. It's what I had. Sorry. It just sounds a lot like the last one. Whereas the Evansville Vandenberg Public Library Board of Trustees has also determined the library may proceed to lease the space in accordance with the terms of Indiana Code thirty-six dash one dash ten in as much as this will be a temporary lease and qualifies under the threshold amount of two hundred fifty thousand dollars. Whereas the Evansville Vandenberg Public Library Board of Trustees has now conducted a public hearing pursuant to Indiana Code thirty-six dash one dash ten dash thirteen. Now therefore be it resolved that the library may proceed to enter into a lease with Evansville Holdings LLC in form and substance consistent with the terms presented at the hearing, presented to the Evansville Vandenberg Public Library Board, read in full and adopted this eighth day of June, two thousand and twenty-three by the following I N A votes.
Thank you so much. Is there a motion to approve the resolution as read in full?
Somebody.
Okay, it's been moved. Is there a second? It's been moved in second that we approve the resolution as read in full. Is there any discussion? There's no discussion. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye. Abstain.
One abstention, all opposed. Motion pass. With the acceptance of the proposed lease, the board shall direct execution of said lease and give notice of the execution of the lease by publication in accordance with Indiana Code thirty-six dash one dash ten, section thirteen E. And last, um, I will seek a motion directing that CEO Scott Kenny to execute the lease agreement and for the leasing agent to give notice of the execution of the lease by publications in accordance with Indiana Code five dash three dash one.
So move.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second that Scott execute the lease agreement. And is there any discussion? There's no discussion. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Do you have any abstentions?
This is for you to execute. You still abstain.
Okay, one abstention. All opposed, please indicate by saying. Motion pass. So now we move forward with the finance report. We will have Lori.
So first on the finance report this month, I wanted to share with you the information that we received concerning the two thousand and twenty-three circuit breaker tax cap reductions. And as you can see, it's based on our overall rates, our levy rates. And that amount then is multiplied times our total that is attributed to the library, our portion of that. So in total, we are looking at two million six hundred sixty-six thousand five hundred eighty-two dollars and fifty-five cents in reduce, estimated reductions on tax caps with the circuit breaker this year. Because the debt service fund is a protected fund, the nine thousand four hundred six dollars and ninety-four cents is representative of what is not part of the protection. And that's the sixty-five and over exemptions. So homesteads are exempt, but the sixty-five plus are not. And so when we multiply that out by the factors of our rate levies, then that attributes two hundred seventy-nine thousand six hundred and fourteen dollars to special library fund, which is Willard. And then the library operating fund, two million three hundred seventy-seven thousand five hundred sixty-one dollars for our basic operating fund. We won't see the end result. These are just estimates until later in the year, because typically we receive right at fifty percent of our certified levy for property taxes in the June settlement. And I'll bring that information back next month, once we've received that as to where we ended up with our tax settlement. But typically that in the past years, we received the fifty percent in the first settlement. And then after everything is kind of settled for the year in December, then is when we will see what that actually is. And that can change based on assessed values. If there's an assessed value change in the fall, it also can be attributed to if there's any appeals that are not collected or you know, anything that goes like into a tax sale because it wasn't paid, delinquencies and things like that are factored into our December. So that's when we really see how much we are affected by the year, but that, these are the estimates that were provided by the DLGF.
Thank you. Thank you, Lori, and I didn't press for information. There's no.
Correct.
I got you. And then next we'll have the report on appropriations as well as, go ahead.
So the appropriations for the month ending May thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-three, our balance was ten million two hundred fifty-six thousand one hundred forty-six dollars and fifty-eight cents, or approximately sixty-eight percent of the original budget is remaining at this time. And the investments to date for all four funds that are with our state investment pool, Trust Indiana, is eleven million eight hundred twelve thousand dollars, eight hundred twelve thousand four hundred dollars. And that is the average daily rate for yield, average daily yield for May of five point oh four seven five percent or up point one six one five percent since April. And the average daily yield year to date is four point six six oh three or up a little over almost nine tenths of a percent since April.
Thank you so much for that. Next on the agenda, we will have approval of bills.
Right.
That's you.
I just have to move for page thirty-five on your documentation shows the expenditures in the past thirty days, more or less. And I had moved for approval of the invoices for the period May tenth through June eighth inclusive in a total of about three hundred and seventy-eight dollars, two hundred, three hundred and seventy-eight thousand two hundred and fifty-one dollars and eight and six cents. And the payrolls for May five and May nineteen in the total amounts of two hundred and seventy-one, three seventy-three, forty-six, twenty, and four fourteen, forty-seven, fifty-six. To be executed by the body upon approval.
Thank you. Is there a motion to accept the approval of the bills? That was yours. Okay.
Second.
Second. Okay, it's been moved and properly second that we accept the bills for this month. And is there any discussion? If no discussion, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please use the same sound. The motion pass.
And then Mr. Peter did not.
Duly noted. Please, everybody sign. Okay, send that down. Next, we will have a proposed budget calendar, and that is going to be by Lori.
In your packet is a proposed budget calendar for the two thousand and twenty-four, I call it budget season. Uh, and it starts this, it's starting now with collecting and gathering information by our staff. And then we'll take that gathered information and fit it into our budget funds with our five budget funds, which are the operating fund, library improvement reserve fund, the bond interest and redemption fund, and our rainy day fund. And then we'll gather and collect information from Willard for the special fund. And then once we have all that, the first event that affects the board will be the proposed two thousand and twenty-four budget presentation to our finance committee, uh, which was set at the beginning of the year, and that will be the week of July twenty-fourth through the twenty-eighth. We'll be in touch with them soon to find out the best date um, to meet with them that week. Then the following week, we will be emailing the proposed budget to the full library board uh, by August the third. August the tenth will be our regular board meeting and the first reading of the full library board uh, for the actual budget, all budgets. And then we'll have our DLGF budget workshop to be announced, but it's looking like it's going to be the uh, August the fifteenth or somewhere in and out approximate timeframe according to our DLGF rep. And that's online. It's a virtual, they do everything virtually now. August thirty-first, we'll submit notice to the taxpayers of proposed budget and tax levies and public hearing date on the gateway site provided for public review. And then on September eleventh, our next board meeting, we'll do a budget press, I'm sorry, this is the budget presentation to the city council. And this is subject to change if they change their meeting date on us. And then the public hearing at our next September board meeting will be on September fourteenth. And then on October the twelfth, on our October board meeting, the board will adopt our two thousand and twenty-four budget, and then it will be submitted online through the gateway system of Indiana. And these are all within the deadlines that were set by the Director of Indiana Budget Division.
Thank you so much. We've heard the budget presented by Lori and the proposed budget calendar. Is there a motion to accept the budget calendar?
A move. Second.
Right, we have a motion and a second. Is there a discussion? We have it in front of you. No discussion?
Each of these have to have, which of these have to have the body ready to vote?
Uh, so the actual voting and adoption of the budget will be in October. Uh, but the public hearing will be in Sept, at our September fourteenth meeting. So those are two very critical meetings where we have to have a quorum.
But no action at a forum in September.
Correct, just the public hearing.
My only comment, and I don't know if it'll be a concern, the EBFC, and I'm assuming some of the non-public schools as well will be on, I believe will be on fall break on that October twelfth. It's a week later than we typically go. And it's a full week. So I don't know who all that may impact, but I just wanted to point that out. I'm trying to double check that my, my internet's running slowly.
So we have it in, in conjunction with the regular board meeting.
I saw that.
So if the board determines they want to change the board meeting, then that date will change. It will be subject to change. Because it will occur on the same day as whenever the board has their meeting.
I just wanted to point that out. Like I said, I'm trying to confirm, but I'm pretty sure Sheila, do you remember it's, because it's not the first week on, or it's the second. That's what I thought.
Also, it's not Fall Festival week.
It is not Fall Festival week.
It's the week after.
So we can move forward with this particular motion without changing it. And if we do, we could just.
I'll bring it back and revise, revise.
I can make a motion to say that October twelfth or such date as the meeting in October itself.
Well, there might be a couple other change of dates on there, so I would do it for the whole, whole document, if you're gonna do it that way.
All right, so do I have a motion to accept the budget calendar as presented? There, someone. And we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Now for the discussion, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same sound. Motion pass. Moving on to other business or staff spotlight, we have Jake Colemeyer.
You got it.
I did. Good. That's the chair.
I'm gonna take the microphone off of here because I'm gonna look that way too. Oh, well, it's on that screen too. Uh, hello. Uh, so for those of you who I have not met before, I am Jake Colemeyer. I'm the tech librarian in the reference department here at Central. Um, and before we get started, I just want to point out this logo for the library card discount program came out this week. This is by our fantastic marketing team. Faith got this done, and I love it. And you will see on your table, you have buttons there for this. You're, if you want to wear that around and support the program or show it off to someone who owns a business that you know, Scott sporting his, I know Lori's got hers on and Becky's got hers, Nancy's got hers. Um, but I'm working on getting buttons out to the public service staff here at Central as I make the buttons. I apologize if your button is a little crooked. Our one button maker and maker was sitting at an angle and the one in outreach was sitting at another angle, so. But I need my clicker here. I'm almost prepared. There we go. So let me talk to you a little bit about the library card discount program here. So back in two thousand and twenty-one, Sierra Pandy, who was our business librarian who left the company last year, uh, worked with admin to launch this as a, did a soft launch on this program. And when she left, it kind of sat there and I went to my manager and reference and said, hey, are we gonna do anything with this? Because we did not have a business librarian at the time. And luckily, I got the go-ahead from her, Shannon, my boss, and from Heather and admin to pursue this. And so the background on this is we partner with local businesses in Evansville and Vandenberg County as the library. And cardholders receive an agreed upon discount or special offer when showing their card at a participating business. My card here for example. Um, and then businesses who participate would select their own discounts and special offers as well as their terms. So for example, um, and special conditions and duration. So like, for example, one per customer, you could get twenty percent off and for six months. Uh, we provide an MOU that is drafted by the lawyer and outlines the details of the partnership with that specific participating business. And then we promote via the web, social, and other digital avenues. Allergies, aren't they lovely? There we go. So we have a recruitment strategy that I've kind of tried to work out and flush out here. Uh, so I've been sending out informational letters for recruitment. We've done emails. Uh, we have a partnership with eRep, which is the Evansville Regional Economic Partnership. Uh, we have staff suggestions, participant suggestions, and marketing initiatives. Here are our current businesses on the screen, and I have some more news in a second, once they all pop up here. Sorry, I forgot how slow animations can be in PowerPoint. Um, I hadn't made a real PowerPoint since I was teaching five plus years or six years ago. Um, so until this morning, we had ten businesses. Our eleventh business, we got a deal officially added with Denise Biggerstaff Coaching this after, or around lunchtime today. And then I went to lunch and came back and opened my Outlook, and lo and behold, we had another business sign up. Um, I will not tell you that one yet till we sign the paperwork, but is a mobile massage therapist. So here is an example, a list of everything we have signed up so far, and this is also available on our website. Uh, you can see we've got the business, the location. If they are mobile, if they come to you, we've got that marked as around Evansville and all of those discounts. Um, right now, our next steps, getting new marketing initiatives. I met with the marketing team over the past couple of weeks of more information available to pick up at our locations, the businesses getting decals and signage. Working again on more businesses getting recruited to join us, uh, which is a big benefit, not just for the business, but for us too, because we see an increase in library card holders, hopefully. Um, and as part of the process of signing up for a library card, something else we can promote. And then occasionally, I'm on the EVPL podcast, and I'm gonna hope to eventually bring in some of our business partners into showcase their businesses in future podcasts. Uh, I have an invitation for all of you, and I've offered this up to the staff too. If you have a favorite business, or you know someone who owns a business, or you are linked to a business somehow, you can ask them to join us, or you can reach out to them. Just share this link, evpl.org slash L C D P slash, gotta have that last slash on the end. And special thanks to everyone, admin, marketing, the awesome logo, IT, and my boss Shannon. And there you go. Thank you for, and anyone have any questions?
I have a comment.
Yes.
I think this is awesome, but I also think that if you would connect with Melissa Moore.
Yes.
Who is with WS, what is it? What is it? What is it? Whatever the radio station. Thank you. That tells you how much I listen to it. But if you would get with her and turn and go on there, maybe she does pre-recordings or she does it in person, where you could make particularly kids aware that this is available and the parents. And the parents as well, I think that it would do a lot. To get a little bit more encouragement and involvement with those kids, and I'm gonna mention it to Melissa.
I actually went through leadership Evansville with her, uh she was in my class.
Two, three years ago, so yeah, I'll reach out to her, yeah.
So.
Cool, cool. There we go, there we go.
The other piece to back off of that are the. I know we have um access cards that families can check out to go to C Mo or can go to, I think the zoo, I think they're.
They are part of the, the library card discount program, I should have mentioned this, is. Part of an initiative that we call E V P L extras and this is part of E V P L extras. And another part of that would include those uh passes, museum and zoo passes and. I'm blanking now, looking at Heather and Heather. Oh, parks too.
Yes.
Westmore Woods.
I just thought that'd be a nice connection as well, because families, I think that's just a great opportunity for families.
Yes.
I have to say, I don't think there's been enough emphasis on giving coffee shops.
I I agree with you there, um having come before, after being a teacher, then working for Starbucks. Apologize for not working for a local organization before coming here. Um, I reached out to every coffee shop in Evansville. Just me though, reaching out. If anyone loves coffee, anyone in this room. Go talk to your favorite local coffee shop. I will go with you if you'd like me to. Um I know uh a lot of the. Letters I sent, um texts, emails, Facebook messages for organizations that don't have email addresses listed. Uh and phone calls, I got a couple of odd responses when I called on the phone, so I thought, okay, we won't do the cold phone calls right now, but um. Yeah, and if you think of a business and you don't want to talk to them, if you'd like me to do it, please email, I will um gladly go talk to them.
I just want to say the Sebri Consulting, I'm gonna use that like expeditiously.
There you go, there you go.
I can't wait to call.
And uh any updates on this, you'll see them go online as soon as we approve anything. Uh once um Heather gets up to Scott and it gets signed, I get in touch with marketing, they get that up on the website and. It'll be there, uh we got those new marketing initiatives coming and then also I will try and make sure I put a note in our staff accomplishments, we send up through our managers that come to your board reports, so. They'll be in there.
Thank you so much, Jake. Let us give Jake a round of applause.
This is a mock-up of a potential ad we have. Uh Walters is working on one of their potential Facebook ads. We haven't approved anything, but because of marketing, see it with our logo that was finished. Around on there, uh but uh they said the next few weeks they'll work on getting like their Facebook ads rolled out, so.
Good deal.
Thank you. All right. Now, next on the agenda. I wanted to know if there are any announcements.
I just have the couple usual announcements. And uh just wanted to let everyone know summer reading has started and um take off at all of our locations went very, very well. Large attendance, um we just met with the admin team yesterday, Wednesday, yep, and um. They all had great attendance at their uh locations, things are going very well, we just kicked off. And um the other thing I wanted to point out um is we have a packet of our summer reading information for you in front of you and most importantly, we have an invitation for you. For our speak reception. And we would love to see you all there, and that's all I have for my keep it brief this meeting.
Well, before we adjourn this meeting. Because I'm the chair for another ten seconds. Just want to say that I thought it was a good meeting, I thought everybody was very cooperative and very helpful, I want to thank the staff for sitting and just uh. Allowing us to get through this, thank you Lori, I'm just doing this because this is it right here. But nothing else being said, we are officially in charge.